Single gift ever given to a city by an American family. But for Lucas and his wife Melody Hobson, it's all about the construction workers who are helping to build his dream.
You know, I can dream this stuff up, but it doesn't do any good if I don't have you guys to build it.
Thank you for pouring your heart into our building. This is your building too. So you're the artists of this art museum.
The project will put more than 1,500 laborers to work and will provide 350 permanent jobs when completed. Seventy-six percent of those jobs will go to local Angelenos, but the museum will bring so much more.
Can you imagine coming into a place built by the man who brought us Star Wars and watching that first movie and having him explain what it took to change the world and to create the Star Wars legacy?
Yes, you will be able to commune with the Force here. The museum will also showcase art, digital art, movie props, photography and cutting-edge technology. This cultural mecca in South LA will also serve as a classroom for the many schools nearby, with workshops, after-school programs, lectures, internships and festivals. May the Force be with you, Obi-Wan Kenobi. Construction is set to be completed in 2021.
Los Angeles beat out several other cities, including Chicago and San Francisco, to become the site of the new museum. Ever wanted to get behind the wheel of an electric vehicle for a test drive? Well, dozens of folks got the chance to do just that during the 9th Annual Charge Up LA Test Drive Event and learned about money-saving programs.
Today's event is Charge Up LA. It is an electric vehicle event. It gives people the opportunity to test drive electric cars. Electric vehicles are amazing cars. They're better for the environment and they're more fun to drive. And the best way to let people to experience that is to test drive the cars themselves.
I like the smooth turning and like the pausing with the brake isn't too difficult, so that's nice.
You can talk to people all day about EVs, but really if they sit down in the car and they test drive it, they get it. They get what a great experience it is.
I love it. I think it's really wonderful how we can have a Charge Up LA event and then just people get to test drive their cars and they, you know, no pressure at all. That's really great.
Nationally, they're about 2.5% of all new cars sold. Here in Los Angeles, it's about 8 or 9%. So actually, we're way ahead of the curve.
I'm just interested in, you know, saving money on, you know, not spending on gas anymore and just having a renewable energy car.
This year, for the first time in decades, our air quality is actually worse. So cars are an important part of the solution. Driving electric vehicles are a key part of the solution. We're moving in the right direction, probably not fast enough. And we have to make the public more aware of the benefits of them, whether it's cleaning air, reducing climate change or saving money at the pump.
To learn more about LADWP's EV rebates and incentives, visit ladwp.com/ev. LAX is one step closer to becoming more efficient. A new city app helps detect malicious emails. And Democratic presidential candidate Beto O'Rourke visits the Southland. All this in City View. Los Angeles World Airports and City officials broke ground on the LAX Consolidated Rent-A-Car Facility, which is expected to open in 2023. The Consolidated Rent-A-Car Facility, also known as ConRac, is planned to relocate more than 20 existing rental car locations into one 5.3 million square foot hub adjacent to the 405 freeway.
This facility will hold 18,000 parking stalls. So that includes storage of the vehicles, ready return. So when you go to rent your car, it's right there waiting for you in a parking spot.
Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti announced LA Cyber Lab's new threat intelligence sharing platform, as well as a free mobile app that will help people detect malicious email. Garcetti said this makes LA the first city in the nation to release a publicly available threat sharing platform and cybersecurity app. Democratic presidential candidate and former Texas Representative Beto O'Rourke visited LA as part of a three-day trip to California in support of his bid to secure the Democratic nomination. He visited LA Skid Row and participated in a roundtable discussion on equity and justice as they relate to the war on drugs.
People want to be treated with respect. People want to be able to take a shower. People want to have a roof over their heads. People want to be able to get the care that allows them to live to their full potential.
Popcorn, pizza and a movie. What can be better? Well, not much. That's exactly what some elementary school kids and their parents got to enjoy recently during a special movie night at school.
We're all from elementary school to watch a movie, Incredibles, in '22. So like, it's everyone's first time to watch it at elementary school.
Daughter's in TJ and she's really excited to go to a movie in her school in her pajamas today. Today was pajama day at school, so they're really excited about it.
The story of Al Dama Elementary School is it's one of the most popular elementary schools in the school district right now. They have a dual-language program. And one of the things that's exciting here is tonight we're showing the movie in Spanish with English subtitles because all the kids can understand both.
Because sometimes when we watch movies and they give us popcorn, we kind of make a mess, so we don't do that sometimes. But today's gonna be a special movie.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting because a lot of my friends are gonna be there and I'm gonna be able to watch a movie at school.
LAPD Chief Michael Moore and Mayor Eric Garcetti joined the 2nd Annual Heart of LAPD Walk, which helps to address the issue of suicide within the police force.
The loss through suicide is not just unfathomable, but it's not tolerable. It's not something we can accept. And we must do better in support of one another.
I'm here to try to raise awareness and hopefully this whole law enforcement, high rate of suicide, we can decrease it as much as possible.
There's such a stigma around depression, such a stigma around trauma, and we can't let that be. We see officers who go out every single day and see some of the most traumatic things in our city. And they have to go home and process that and deal with their own difficulties in their families, their relationships, undiagnosed mental health things. And I think too many officers think if they say something to someone, it's gonna be bad on their record. And our message is it's not. It's the opposite. If you don't say something, that's when it turns bad.
I have a friend that came in a little bit after me. Her name is Nadine Hernandez Fox and she had ended her life to suicide. And I think the importance of this walk is to get rid of the stigma of suicide. And it is a huge problem with law enforcement for various reasons. And I'm here to show my support.
When it comes to taking care of ourselves, we tend to neglect that because of peer influences, because the misconception and misinformation of mental health.
The courage to face your demons is the greatest gift that you can give yourself. Suicide tears families apart.
How we can help each other has been my goal. It is a huge problem and there are resources that can help you. It's okay to ask for help.
Live painting, art installations, dance and art workshops were all part of the fun as the community enjoyed the 17th Annual Tar Fest.
This is the 17th Annual Tar Fest. It's a free community arts and music festival. We started just as a vehicle to bring people in the neighborhood together. And it evolved into something more where artists and musicians and families can just come to a beautiful green space in the center of Los Angeles and discover art and discover each other.
It's a nice event. It's really a nice event.
The live music and the calm vibes, it's been really great.
We have actually curators and independent curators produce local artists into the event and it provides exposure for them. And it's a great opportunity for people to discover new emerging artists.
I think it's a great opportunity, especially for kids, to be able to take notice and see that, you know, that we can do what we love. This is my job. This is my career.
Enjoy a night filled with fun and art. Come out to honor the contributions of immigrants. And it's that time again. Don't miss the music and culture of the Watts Towers Day of the Drum and Jazz Festival. All this and Things to Do. The Van Nuys Arts Festival is coming. Presented by LA City Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, this year's theme is VNAF: The Glow-Up, with a focus on the arts, tech, nature and empowerment. Partnering with the San Fernando Valley Arts Community, this creative and exciting event will feature art, music and plenty of free food and fun for the whole family. The Van Nuys Arts Festival happens Friday, September 27th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Van Nuys Civic Center. To RSVP or for more info, visit tiny.cc/vnaf2019. Join Councilman Jose Huizar at the unveiling of a Bracero Monument at the opening of the Migrants Bend Plaza. Located at the corner of Cesar Chavez and Spring Street, the monument and plaza are in honor of the many contributions immigrants have made to our city. Come out and enjoy great food, culture and performances. The Bracero Monument unveiling happens on Sunday, September 29th, beginning at 2:00 p.m. For details, contact the district office at 323-526-9332. The Friends of Watts Towers Art Center present two exciting festival events. The 38th Annual Watts Towers Day of the Drum Festival will bring an unbelievable drum festival experience. The Simon Rodeo Watts Tower Jazz Festival offers an all-star lineup of international recording artists and local jazz artists. Bring the whole family Saturday, September 28th for the 38th Annual Watts Towers Day of the Drum Festival. Then return Sunday, the 29th, for the Simon Rodeo Watts Tower Jazz Festival, beginning each day at 10:00 a.m. For details, visit culturela.org. And that's a look at Some Things to Do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana K. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Kat Packer with the Department of Cannabis Regulation. I'm here to share with you a few basic rules regarding cannabis in the city of Los Angeles. Although California legalized cannabis in 2016, not every cannabis activity is lawful. And even when following the law, it's just as important to stay responsible. You must be at least 21 years old to legally consume adult-use cannabis. It is illegal to use, smoke, eat or vape cannabis in public places. It is illegal to drive while impaired. All cannabis products must be stored in the trunk of a car and be inaccessible to drivers and passengers. If you're going to purchase cannabis in the city of Los Angeles, please do so from a licensed retail store. If you need help locating legal businesses, we provide a list and map of our locally authorized retail stores on our website. We also have a bunch of other great information on our website. Health and safety information, information about commercial licensing and how to file a complaint about cannabis-related activity. For more information about what's legal and how to stay responsible, please visit cannabis.lacity.org. And remember, stay responsible, LA.
The two things I love the most, my family and my city, are right here in LA. This is a city of shared convictions, a belief in a country where we all belong. I am so proud of this city and its people.
Good morning. Whoa. Let's cut the volume here. Good morning, good morning. Today is September 25th. I want to welcome each and every one of you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call? Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscainos, Sedio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very, uh, very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Lee moves. Bonin, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. Harris Dawson, seconds, next.
Mr. President, item one is an item noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on this item?
Yes, there are cards on the item.
Let's hold that, uh, that item and move on to the next set of items.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to continue item three for thirty days to October 25th.
Okay, so ordered without objection.
And then items two through twenty-six are items for which public hearings have been held. There are requests from a member to hold items eight, nine, and twelve.
Let's hold those items. Mr. Bonin?
I'd like to call item number four special, please.
Four, let's hold that for Mr. Bonin. Any others? Seeing none, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll. Tabby, you'd like to vote? Let's move on to the next set of items.
Items twenty-seven through thirty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, those items, without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, then let's move on to the next section.
Items thirty-two through thirty-six are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Well, you know what, Mr. Krikorian? Mr. Krikorian has arrived, so I'll defer to Mr. Krikorian on items thirty-two through thirty-six.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. All of those items were heard and approved in Budget and Finance, and it appears that each of them is a routine, well, number thirty-five is payment of a judgment. The others are routine settlements that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you, sir. There are no, let me just check, no questions on those items. So, Madam Clerk, we want to run through those items and then we'll vote on them.
Yes, Mr. President. Then for item thirty-two and the case entitled "Ally Winston et al. versus the City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to pay the plaintiffs fifty-seven thousand dollars, fifty-seven, five hundred dollars. Additionally, LAPD's California Public Records Act unit will make the following changes to its policies and practices. One, the unit will adopt, maintain, and enforce a written policy manual for its compliance with the CPRA. The unit will maintain an online public records portal for submitting and reviewing CPRA requests. The unit will proactively make certain documents available online without a request being made. And finally, the unit will include a CPR inspection in LAPD's annual audit plan for five years following this settlement. That's for item thirty-two. Then for thirty-three and the case entitled "Voice for the Animals Foundation versus the City of Los Angeles et al.," there is a recommendation to expend up to two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars in settlement. For item thirty-four and the case entitled "Theresa Dominguez et al. versus the City of Los Angeles et al.," there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. For item thirty-five and the case entitled "Rashanik Madhavi Pore versus the City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to expend up to five-hundred-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents in settlement. And finally, for item thirty-six and the case entitled "Andrew Mahoney versus the City of Los Angeles," there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's prepare to vote on those items. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll. Tabby, you'd like to vote?
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Continue.
Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special are general public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Price, I know you have a special guest visiting us. Why don't we recognize him?
To give a dear friend to our city and to this council, the Honorable Hugo Rojas. Hugo?
Who's a school board member, Sentinel Valley. Welcome. Just give Hugo a round of applause for his service.
Thank you, honorable council members, honorable president, members of the audience. I come here wearing another hat today. I represent California Youth Karate Club, a nonprofit organization. When I started karate in Hawthorne, and at nine years old, it really helped me in terms of put me in the right track in life, and we do that for kids today. It's free after-school programs, and I want to invite everyone to the Sixteenth Annual California Youth Karate Nationals Championships, happening this Sunday at the L.A. Convention Center. You can actually see it on the marquees, so we're excited. Formerly, this karate tournament was held for fifteen years at the L.A. Sheriff's Academy in Whittier. It was in the gymnasium, but we are wall-to-wall spaced in there, and we needed more room, so we took a chance and we thought we'd go big. And thanks to President Herb Wesson, Councilman Price, for your kind assistance and your donation, because nonprofits do need the help, as we know, to help our youth. And as I mentioned, when I was nine, I was a kid hanging out at the park, in Lenox Park, with the wrong crowd, just because I got bullied by some kids. And today, it has changed my life, and because I couldn't afford it when I was thirteen years old, my master told me, "Hugo, you get here to the studio, and you're going to start cleaning up the studio and doing some work to earn your lessons." So, that's where my passion comes from, and I want to share further with everyone at a later time. I have provided some information for all the council members. Would love to personally connect with each council member to share our story and the work that we are doing. So, once again, if you'd please join us this Sunday for the Sixteenth Annual California Youth Karate Nationals Championships in the concourse hall, the L.A. Convention Center. Mr. Olmos, real pleasure to see you again, sir. You came many years ago to Losinger High School, and I remember that, and thank you for all your work and everyone that's here that contributes to youth in Los Angeles. Thank you. And this is actually the dragon that is going to our grand champion youth. So, we have this unique award that's been recognized throughout California, and we call it the California Dragon Award, and the grand champion youth will not only get the first-place trophies, the medals, that are real beautiful, but this is the dragon, grand champion dragon, that we will feature in all of the eight rings that we will host. So, thank you once again. Have a great day.
Thank you, and good luck. We'll see you on Sunday. I'd like to recognize Ms. Martinez.
Mr. Sedio, would you like to join us?
Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues and members of the public. It gives me great pleasure to be here today to celebrate Latino Heritage Month. I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez and Councilmember Gil Sedio, and Daniel Brazil, which who is the general manager of the Department of Cultural Affairs, whose team was instrumental in putting together the Latino Heritage Month booklet, which we all unveiled this morning, so stay tight, because it's coming, it's on its way, but it's here, we will be unveiling it in, in, in just a moment. After an exciting El Grito where we celebrated a historic eighty years of Mexican independence alongside more than ten thousand people, this is just another opportunity for us to recognize the Latino community here in Los Angeles, because our community is one to celebrate. When we have a president who continuously attacks and mocks the hard work of our people and of immigrants, the eyes of the nation turns to Los Angeles and to all of us, to fiercely fight for them and to remind them that they have a home here, that they have a unique and storied history here in Los Angeles, and it's our part to make sure that they feel welcome. We honor and celebrate the history and make sure that they know that they're recognized and they have a place here in our nation. So, today, it's a great day to recognize the incredible and notable work of some of Latinos, some of our Latinos actors and media people here in our nation. I stand before you with some amazing honorees, which I will be happy to recognize, but I will first want to acknowledge my two colleagues that are here this morning. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, who in and of herself is a trailblazer, the first woman elected to Council District Seven in the northeast San Fernando Valley, who was our incredible madrina next, last year, and put on an amazing show for Latino Heritage Month and El Grito, and it's my honor to introduce her here this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and I am grateful to be able to join you today. And I want colleagues, I know many of you were there to enjoy the festivities of what was another remarkable El Grito, and let's give it up for Ms. Martinez and her incredible team for showing this city what we're made of. Because our culture and our community and our contributions to the city are ones that should be celebrated, and I'm proud to be part of a community that has earned a reputation through our work as being tireless contributors to this fabric of this city. The honorees that are here with us today are no strangers, and they are significant contributors as well to what makes our community so incredible. I remember meeting Edward James Olmos more than twenty years ago, when I worked for Councilman Mike Hernandez, when we were experiencing some very tragic times with youth gang violence, and he came out during a mandala project that we had brought to Cypress Park. And it's through his collective efforts that he's continued to be someone that has contributed very favorably, not just outside of his day-to-day work, but has been an incredible supporter of, you know, our city's youth, and has been engaged for quite some time outside of his career. So, it's, uh, it's incredible to be here with him. And when I think about the women that are helping to give a voice to our community in the media, I think, you know, Ms. Martinez selected some incredible honorees that are very much deserving of the recognition that they're about to receive today. But to commemorate Latino Heritage Month is not a day-long celebration, it's not a month-long celebration. Honestly, it is our responsibility to continue to celebrate the contributions that are made each and every day by the members of our communities that we so honorably represent. And I know how much work goes into producing all of the events that go on during these months to really highlight the contributions of our Latino community. I'm very excited that in Pacoima, and we want to invite you all to be a part of it, to celebrate El Dia de los Muertos in partnership and commemoration of a fifty-year sister-city relationship that we've enjoyed with the city of Mexico City. So, we want to invite everyone to come on out and learn more about the contributions and the history of the Latino community and the importance of what it represents here in Los Angeles. So, again, it is my great honor to be here. Councilwoman Martinez, I want to congratulate you on being a phenomenal madrina this, for this Latino Heritage Month. I think our city is absolutely deserving of these types of celebrations, and, uh, and it gives me great pride to know that the value that is placed on producing events that our, that our community deserves is a high priority for all of us to do, particularly at a time when our community has continued to be under attack by a government and an administration that has continued to disrespect us. We are here to uplift the people of Los Angeles and to make sure that they have a voice. And it's with that that I'm just so grateful to join you here this morning and to thank our honorees for their contributions every single day. But again, to, to serve alongside colleagues who equally value the contributions of our incredible community. As a daughter of Mexican immigrants, it gives me great pride to serve on this council, but it gives me even more pride to know that I serve alongside individuals that are equally valuing our contributions to the city every day. So, thank you very much, and congratulations, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. Now, it gives me great pleasure to introduce another member of our Latino caucus, the great Gil Sedio.
When you listen to Monica or Nuri, you see how articulate the voices are of our community. You see the value and the importance of having representation that places the context of all our activities within the social and political context, the social, cultural, and political history of this city and this nation. We are here today to celebrate, and we, as a community, celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, but it's not just the month. Trump and Trumpian politics, whether they're from Washington, D.C., or here in the city of Los Angeles, have been attacking this community relentlessly, ceaselessly, day in and day out. And so, we are here today to honor people who are truth-tellers, people who have committed their careers to telling the truth, presenting the news in a language that this community understands. This is a bilingual community. There are those in this room who may be linguistically challenged, but they accommodate that, and we accommodate that. Edward James Olmos, the iconic Edward James Olmos, a man I met in the spring of nineteen-seventy-eight, has been the head of the spear in terms of breaking down images, in terms of what it means to be Mexican and Mexican-American in this community and in this society. He is an extraordinary actor by any standard. He is of world-class, and we are very pleased and honored to be here with a dear friend, but more so than that, a champion in presenting the image of our community, the voice of our community, on the other side of the hyphen, on the English side of the hyphen. I am pleased and honored to be here with my colleagues. It is a joy, and I look forward to the celebration both of this day and the rest of the month. Thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Colleagues, and please help me welcome Councilmember Jose Weezer.
Happy Latino Heritage Month here in the city of Los Angeles. In case many, any of you have not noticed, there are a lot of Mexicans, Latinos in this great city, and there's an explanation to that. Not only, not only was this once Mexico, but also, the city of L.A. has the most Mexicans other than Mexico City than any other city, including Mexico. That's a tremendous statement. It's a tremendous statement because not only have we, as Latinos and Mexicans, been part of this city since its origination, but we continue to be part of it, not only in its population, but contributing to the employment and to the success of this great city. And the honorees that we have here have played a very important role in that, from our reporters who, day in and day out, tell the stories about our Latino community and what's going on in the world, to what a population where they get most of the news visually, that's a very important role that they've played. But these two women have not only are reporting the news, they're passionate about what they do, they care about what they do, and it comes through in their reporting. Asalia Inigas, who I met when I was at the school board, we used to do a lot of morning shows, reporting on the everyday conditions of the schools and what was going on with it. It was great to see her there, interviewing parents, talking to them about how their children can and should succeed in our school, and she not only reported the news, but she was actually helping provide a service to these young people and the parents at that, at the schools. Andrea Gonzalez, who continues to do her role in Univision and has been doing a wonderful job in presenting us well as a Latina and showing that no matter who you are, you can achieve great dreams, and if, particularly in a male-dominated industry, she's doing a wonderful job as a Latina, continuing to open roads. And what can we say about the iconic, as Councilmember Sedio said, Edward James Olmos? When you think of Latino L.A. and people who represent as well as Latinos, I think Edward James Olmos quickly surfaces to the top. From the day when he came out in the blockbuster Blade Runner, to coming out in the iconic zoot suit play and, and movies about the Latino-Chicano culture in the city of Los Angeles, to him being a public servant by making sure that our young people are exposed to work, books, with his Feria de Libros, and the list goes on and on and on about his contributions. And you know, when the city's most disturbing time happened during the nineteen-ninety-two riots, and everybody was talking about, "What should we do? What should we do?" You know who was out there with a broom picking up in South L.A. without cameras, without anything? He just went out there and said, "As a singular person, let's go out there, get your hands dirty, let's start cleaning this up." And he not only showed us about what we can do at the time, but he talked about unity. He talked about what we can do about extending ourselves He talked about what we can do about extending ourselves outside of our comfort zone in the segregated Los Angeles to talk with other races, other cultures, other economic groups about how we keep this city moving forward. Not enough can be said about Edward James Olmos. Thank you, amigo. Thank you, Hernandez, for what you've done. And I'll end with this. There's a little secret about Edward James Olmos. His, you know, Wezar is a very uncommon last name, right? I sometimes think we made it up, there's so few of us, but his mother, actually, his mother's maiden name is Wezar, from the same part of Mexico we're on from, in Zacatecas, in the city of Jerez. I call him my primo, my brother, and thank you for all you've done. So enjoy Latino Heritage Month, and let's not forget that as we celebrate month after month for different groups and ethnicities, we all are one city that we should celebrate everybody's, everybody's, celebrate everybody's unique things that they bring to the city of Los Angeles. Thank you so much, Madam. Oh, the bracero. Somebody wants me to announce the bracero. On Sunday. And as part of the celebrations that we're doing, I invite you all to come out Sunday. We're celebrating the revelation of a monument that we're doing to braceros. Braceros were Mexican laborers that came to the United States beginning in 1942 during World War II, when the United States was short of labor. They came, and the program ended in 1964, but even after it ended, the braceros kept coming to the United States, and a lot of the new wave of immigrants that you've seen to the United States happened after that program, when those men kept coming to the United States, and now children such as myself, my dad was a bracero, are here. But let's not forget that four million Mexicans sacrificed of their time in a time of need for this country, and it's a little-known history that we don't often talk about, and histories like that should be talked about, about how immigrants and others have contributed to this great country. So see you Sunday. We're gonna have great music, including Oso Matli. Harris Dawson likes Oso Matli, I know that. Ray Leos de Norte, Mr. Alfred, do you know who Ray Leos de Norte are?
He don't.
We'll go out there and dance away. Los Cadetes de Linares, and many others. Begins at 2, ends at 9, and Council President, I've seen you boogie out there, whether you boogie to some soul music or Nortenia music, it's all the same, a little bit more hip action, that's all you need, brother.
I can do it all, Mr. Wezar, I can do it all.
Thank you, Jose. I'd like to introduce Daniel Brazil, who's our general manager of our cultural affairs department. Her office and her team were instrumental in developing the cover for our Latino Heritage Month booklet, so I want her to say a few words and thank her entire team for helping us out, making sure this El Grito and Latino Heritage Month was a success. Daniel?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez Martinez, and thank you for your incredible leadership on advancing the cultural life of Los Angeles. You know, culture, of course, is the way in which we advance life. It's what makes life worth living, in a sense. I want to congratulate the honorees for this esteemed honor and for your cultural contributions to Los Angeles. We have a very small part to play in this. We produce a cultural heritage guide, a calendar of events, we call artists from all over the city, and we ask them to share their artwork as a way that we can represent the cultural zeitgeist that's happening in Los Angeles at this moment. And I will tell you, there's no shortage of opportunities to celebrate, to participate, to view extraordinary artwork, and that's because in large part of the work that this council and this city has provided. Heritage Month celebrations have traditionally been to celebrate those that have been traditionally marginalized in our society, but that doesn't happen here in the city of Los Angeles, because we tell a completely different story. But what is important at this cultural moment is that the city stands its, claims its space and stands its grounds on what it values and who it values. And that's why we produce this book, this is why we invest in cultural celebrations, this is why we invest in the arts, and this is why these artists behind me and these cultural tradition bearers, the ones that are putting forward the image of what is possible for community, is really important. And again, in 100 years, when somebody is looking at this book and they're reviewing the archives of our city, they're gonna know where we stand, they're gonna know what our values are, and we stand squarely behind them. So I want to thank you, and I want to thank this incredible Latino Caucus, and as the only white girl and the honorary white girl up here at this dais right now, I want to say it's a privilege to stand here and celebrate a Latino, and an OG Valley girl, and how important it is to celebrate cultural Los Angeles. So thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. So now let's move on to recognizing these amazing honorees, all which have been leading figures in the media. Our first two honorees are excellent representatives of quality-service journalism to our Spanish-speaking community here in Los Angeles. A population that relies heavily on information, they receive firsthand from both of these incredible women. Although they work for competing outlets, Univision and Telemundo, they serve the same calling, to serve their Latino audience in a way that informs and improves their lives. Our first honoree is Andrea Gonzalez. She is the news anchor for Noticias Univision 34 and leads the new segment of Latinas de Éxito. Andrea was born in Mexico City, where at a very young age she had a calling for journalism. Before coming to Los Angeles, Andrea led a segment focused on success of women in Monterrey, Mexico, and in 2014 became a news correspondent for Univision in Mexico City, where she covered top stories such as missing students, Ayopitipapa protests, drug trafficking, and political issues surrounding the country. In 2016, Andrea was offered the position of the new anchors, news anchor for Noticias Univision 34 and moved to Los Angeles. Andrea is an LA press award, LA Press Awards nominee for her show Latinas en Éxito and is Emmy-nominated winner for Univision's Best Nightly News in Southern California. You can see Andrea on Channel 34 Monday through Friday from 6, at 6:00 PM and 11:00 PM, although right now she's on maternity leave because she just had a baby, her baby's two months old, and I want to make sure when she's back, you guys tune into her, but she is on maternity leave. Let's recognize her and give Andrea a big round of applause.
Thank you. I love your baby. Thank you so much.
Her baby is two months old, I think she looks amazing.
Oh, thank you.
Amazing, mama, go.
This is my postpartum mode.
You look great.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. So thank you so much, Nuri, first of all. This is a great honor to me, and I was thinking about what I'm going to say. Okay, when I came to Los Angeles three years and a half ago, I came with a lot of dreams. This is one of my dreams come true. I remember that my boss, one of the first, the first things that he told me, he told me, you know what? Latino community calls newscast, local newscast, before police, before a doctor, before an authority. So that's the moment I understood about our responsibility as a news media, as a Hispanic news media, and that's what I tried to do this three years and a half ago, and today I think I made it a little bit. But we have to, still working, we have to empower our community most of these times. So anyway, Univision, Telemundo, we are a source for our community, and they trust us. So that's why we have a very big compromise to be here and to be grateful and to still working always for our community. That's our commitment. So thank you so much. Thanks for your attention. Good morning.
Congratulations.
And now, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, a recognition of Latino Heritage Month, we present this recognition to Andrea Gonzalez. Our next honoree is Aselia Inigues, a consumer investigative reporter for Telemundo 52 Responde. Aselia began her career in journalism as a co-anchor for Telemundo weekday evening newscasts in Guadalajara, Mexico. In 1996, she served as a news anchor for Telemundo in Tijuana, Mexico, and in 1997 joined Telemundo 52 here in Los Angeles. Today, Aselia leads Telemundo's, Channel 52's investigative unit, which is tasked with helping consumers who have been wronged and shedding light on solutions on issues that impact the Latino community. Telemundo 52 Responde is often the first source that consumers turn for help. With over two decades of success in her career in journalism, Aselia is a two-time Emmy Award winner for her work as both an anchor and as a reporter, and a four-time Golden Mike winner for her stories surrounding domestic violence and minorities. When Aselia isn't busy helping consumers on newscasts throughout the day for Telemundo 52, she can be seen serving as the station's ambassador for the American Cancer Society's Making Strides Against Breast Cancer campaign to help create awareness for Latinas and the need to prevent, and the need for preventative health exams and education. Please help me welcome Aselia Inigues.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. It's such an honor to be receiving this recognition from you and from the city of LA, a city that has allowed me the privilege to tell all these stories, these very interesting stories of our Latino community, through the screens of Telemundo 52 Los Angeles for over 20 years. I shouldn't be dating myself anymore. I'm gonna stop saying that, but no, it's been, it's been an amazing 20-plus years, and I've been able to go to different places, meet a lot of wonderful people that are making a difference. I'm usually on this side of the stage, reporting on what you guys are doing. Thank you for all the hard work, and we do it from our own place, from, like Andrea was saying, people call us many times before because they don't know who to call, and we love to be able to do that in collaboration and guide them to the right places. I am, I am just very fortunate to have the platform to do that, the place where we can tell the stories, the issues of our Latino community, because they're going through a lot in these days, and obviously it's not the only community, but we're there for them, and we're very proud, and we do it with love, and we will continue to do that because we want to empower them. We want them to know that they can be their own advocates and that they have rights and that they have to fight for justice and for respect, because they deserve it in this time of fear and uncertainty where so many of them are so vulnerable to being taken advantage of. I do it with love, I do it with passion, and I will continue to do it as long as I can, and that's why this recognition means so much to me. It really humbles me. Thank you. Muchísimas gracias.
As you can see, Andrea and Aselia are both incredible talented journalists who have, who are a wonderful example of Latinas in action here in our community, are trusted professionals to make sure that their viewers receive the right information. So it gave, it gives me a great pleasure to recognize both of them for their service to the Spanish-speaking community. So congratulations to you both. Now it gives me the distinct pleasure to introduce our final honoree this morning, but before we do that, I'd like to, are we ready for the clip? We have a small video clip that I'd like for you to tune into. the world. He is a Tony and Academy Award nominated and Emmy-winning actor. While he is an American icon, he was born in Boyle Heights and is without a doubt Los Angeles's treasure. I'm speaking, of course, of the godfather of Latino actors, Mr. Edward James Olmos. The amount, yes? The amount of success this man has had in his industry has been statistically stood in his and in the way of many Latino actors pursuing an acting career, but it's reflective of his own enormous heart, his passion, and undeniable talent. This, when he burst on the scenes with Pachuco, El Pachuco, in Luis Valdez's play and the movie Zoot Suit, it was an explosion of a performance that communicated both in character and in the man performing, a very clear message. We are here to be heard, and my people will be heard. And Mr. Olmos in Los Angeles and America, the world has not stopped listening. Ever since his performances in movies like Blade Runner, Stand and Deliver, The Battle of Gregorio Cortés, American Me, Selena, and on the television shows Miami Vice, Battlestar Galactica, and now on Mayans MC, Edward James Olmos has brought a quiet intensity, integrity, and gravitas to all the characters that he plays. You simply cannot take your eyes off of him. He demands you to watch him and make sure that his characters live in each and every one of us. And while Mr. Olmos is an artist, he's also a humanitarian. He is a voice, he makes sure that his voice is heard throughout, not only in politics, but he makes sure that he speaks truth to power and advocates for change and to defend and uplift unfurnished communities. He is a humanitarian who has volunteered hundreds of hours in nonprofits like Children's Hospital and the Boys and Girls Club of America. He's also, has been incredibly supportive of other Latino actors, and he's played an integral, integral part in organizations like The Latino Artist and the co-founder of the Los Angeles Latino Film Festival, and other organizations such as the Youth Cinema Project, which also helps other students who want to be able to find themselves in the acting world. He has a number of projects underway, and Edward James Olmos has been an ambassador of the Latino community and is a clear, a clear example of what people can do here in Los Angeles. He has more, he, over the last 50 years, Edward James Olmos has been listening and watching, we've been watching him from our seats, and we were making sure that he not only lives in the characters that he portrays, but we also want to recognize the fact that he has given so much to Angelenos. Like I said before, he is the godfather of the Latino actors here in Los Angeles and throughout our community, and it gives me a great pleasure to recognize them during Latino Heritage Month, the great Edward James Olmos.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Gracias. Me están haciendo llorar. Todos ustedes que me están entendiendo ahorita. Todos ustedes que me están entendiendo ahorita. Ahora entienden muy bien la posición que nosotros tenemos en este país, en este pueblo, y somos muchos y vamos a ser muchos más, y nos tienen mucho miedo por eso. So, les digo ahorita, con calma y con dedicación vamos a poder avanzarnos todos. For those of you that are Spanish impaired, don't worry. We live in a bilingual world, multilingual world now. I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Los Angeles for giving me who I am. I weep and cry because I, I finally came to terms with the fact of knowing that all the work that I've done over the last 50 years, when I pass into the next understanding, whenever that might be, whether it be today, tomorrow, in 15 years, 20 years, whenever I go and I go up and see my mom and my dad and my family, I will be leaving this earth in worse shape than when I got here. We have really done it to ourselves, and we continue to do it. I just want to tell you really quick, when you look at Edward James Olmos, when you look at me, remember what you're looking at, and don't ever forget. I am African first, Asian second, indigenous third, mixed with my European-ness, and that's what makes me brown. Because you've got to remember one thing, and I've been saying this for a long time. There's only one race. And that's the human race. Inside of that human race, there are great cultures. There are Asian cultures, Caucasian cultures, African cultures, indigenous cultures, Latino cultures. But there's only one race. When we started to use the word "race" as a cultural determinant was when we destroyed the future of our existence as human beings. When we started to look at each other as different races. Race is a unifying word. We made it what it is today. And it's up to us, because our kids are already saying it. I mean, the kids today are walking out of school like we did back in 1968 when we did our walkouts. They're walking out now because the pollution is too much. I praise them for that, and I hope that every single student in the world walks out of school. I hope they walk out and stay out until we fix what we've done to ourselves. You might think, you know, to yourself, well, that's kind of radical, Ed. That's really a radical move. No, it isn't. We've always done that. It's the peaceful, non-violent source of understanding how to get something across. Sascha Chavez used it, Gandhi used it, Jesus used it. And all I can say to all of you is it's an honor and a privilege to be a native of Los Angeles, be born and raised here in Boyle Heights, be able to look at all of you and say, I've been here for 72 years, and I will pass my life here, and when I die, I will die here. And I can honestly tell you, the future is in our hands. We, the adults of the room, but we're handing it over to the people who will really make the big exchanges. We see what's going on. I never thought I'd be here with tears in my eyes saying, oh my God, we're, we're worse off than we ever have been in the history of our nation and the world. Our political structure has deteriorated to one of total chaos. The integrity is gone. There is no more. I hope that you'll all find it within yourselves to build your integrity to the highest level that you can and move forward, because if you guys don't do it, we're in a lot of trouble. Because history is going to mark you down for what exactly you lived and how you lived it. The future's in our hands. Let's make good use of it. And just know that I'm honored and privileged to be here as American of Latino, Hispanic, Mexican heritage and descent. And I say to all of you, it's been a long time coming, and I never thought I'd be up here crying. You know, it's another really interesting feeling that I've gotten here. When Rick Coker called me up and said, please, they want to give you a thank you for Hispanic Heritage Month, I said, oh, Rick. He says, please come. I said, no. And so here we are. So I say to all of you, council members, thank you so much for the work that you do on a daily level. Thank you for everything you're trying to do for all of us. Stay strong. Stay solid. Keep the faith. God bless all of you, and thank you so much for this honor.
I just want to say, you know, I, I want to, members, and I'm, I'm, I know some of you want to speak, but this is why I hate reading, reading this stuff. Sometimes I should just go off on, based on what my heart tells me to say. But one of the things Edward and I were talking about in the back is he's, he's, actually, the reason we couldn't bring him in here last week is because he's filming a TV series called Mayan MC, and it's being filmed in Santa Clarita, which is the LA area. And he's, he's in the, in the series, and it's featured in FX? FX on cable? And it's about this complicated relationship about the drug trafficking between Mexico and the United States, and this dependency to drugs that this country has, and this complicated relationship. And we're talking about addiction, which is very, something that you're very passionate about in his work with, with addicts and what we need to do. And we talked about how we treat, how we treat addicts. And we talked about the difference between criminalization and treating the symptom of addiction. And this is why this man is so profound and so incredibly important to the movement that we continue to, to make here in Los Angeles, because he understands it from not only a political sense, but from a humanitarian point of view. So I just wanted to recognize you for your incredible work in that TV series, again, Mayan MC on FX. And it's about this complicated relationship about these, this addiction that we have to drugs in this country, how we're treating that, and this incredible obsession with this trafficking, drug trafficking that is occurring in Mexico and what the Mexican government is or isn't doing about it. So I just wanted to recognize you for your work and for all, the call to all of us to, to, to be able to look at addiction through a different lens. So thank you again for being here and taking the time out of your busy schedule, because I know you have to jump on a conference call. Or you're late. You're one minute late. I promised you that I would get you out of here by 11:00. So, members, are there any members on the queue? Members on the queue? See none? Another big round of applause. Mr. Buscayina?
Thank you, and I know, I just want to rise and, and happy Latino Heritage Month. And I just, I feel that I need to say something on Edward James Olmos, who I've known for now 20 years. This man before you had been such an amazing supporter, aside what he's doing on film and television and celebrating art culture in Latino world, in our country, in our world. You have, without hesitation, every time we called on you to recognize the, the men and women of the LAPD, you said yes, whether it was the Medal of Valor, the Officer Appreciation Months, and you always said yes. I picked you up several times, and those car rides I reflect upon today. And I see you as a mentor. We've talked about politics, education, and climate, and then the world that we knew 20 years ago. And you're so spot on that we all collectively have to do our part to make this a better place to live. And I, I love you. I appreciate you. God bless you. And I'm just blessed to, to be your friend. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Well said, Mr. Buscayina.
On behalf of the Celia of Los Angeles, I'd like to recognize Edward James Olmos for his contributions to Angelinos. Thank you, members. One last thing. Council President, I'd like to invite all the members of the Latino Caucus. I'm not sure if our artist is here. I'd like to unveil the cover of this month's Latino Heritage Month booklet. The artist is Hector Silva. I'm not sure if he's here, but if we can all, please, he's not here. So just go ahead and take a picture and unveil it.
All right. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, before you go up, I'm going to recognize Mr. Buscayina.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Welcome, welcome, welcome to Los Angeles. Welcome, welcome. Good to see you, councilman. Good to see you. Colleagues, as you know, we will be playing host to the Summer Olympic Games in 2028. And in preparation for these global games, we are working in partnership with our counterparts in the city of Tokyo and Paris, who are hosting the 2020 and 2024 Games respectively. And today, we have two very special guests joining us from the city of Tokyo, Mr. Yoichi Arai and Mr. Naokai Hayasaka, Director and Assistant Director of the Secretary of Headquarters for the Tokyo 2020 Olympic and Paralympic Games. Let's give them an LA round of applause and welcome. Thank you so much for joining us. Arigato. Now, they are here beginning their efforts for Tokyo 2020 in LA tonight by hosting the Arigato Host Town Initiative Panel and Reception at the Japan House in Hollywood. They'll also be joined by baseball legend Hisonori Takahashi, and they will also be discussing international exchange efforts between the United States and Japan, building on the relationship between these two nations. And we hope that you learn a great deal from our counterparts in Tokyo and hope to emulate best practices from their experiences when it's our turn to host the Games, as we all know, in 2028. We, we are oceans apart, but we are interrelated, like distant cousins. We have a great Japanese-American history and culture here in my district and in the shadows here of City Hall, Little Tokyo. So please, again, give them a warm round of applause. We welcome Mr. Arai to the city of Los Angeles. Yes, of course. And Mr. Hayasaka as well. Thank you so much. Oh, there you go. Tom Labonge, ladies and gentlemen. Our Council General here is as well. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us.
Mr. Spindler, first and last warning. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This is an extra special week for a Los Angeles institution. Many of you, have you have been there, many of you have seen it, and you know all about Musso &amp; Frank's Grill in Hollywood, celebrating 100 years.
Wow. Give them a round of applause.
I'm glad to be joined by the owners and staff and supporters of the Hollywood institution, Musso &amp; Frank Grill, as they celebrate their 100th anniversary. Also celebrating with us today is one of their regulars, we all know and love, Tom Labonge. And also joining us is Hollywood Chamber of Commerce President and CEO Rana Gadban. Welcome, Rana. Musso &amp; Frank, founded by Joseph Musso &amp; Frank Tullé as Hollywood's first restaurant and a bastion, Hollywood's first restaurant and a bastion of both fine cuisine and legendary clientele ever since. Musso &amp; Frank, from the outset, has been home to classic international dishes and signature cocktails, as well as home away from home for world legends in the realms of filmmaking, music, literature, fine art, business, sports, and politics. Throughout a century of profound cultural and culinary change, Musso &amp; Frank has remained not only a shining star in the annals of Hollywood history, but a key force in shaping the evolution of the entertainment capital of the world by welcoming the most influential stars, directors, writers, producers, and industry executives of their time. Musso &amp; Frank has been an important Hollywood location venue for decades and has co-starred in dozens of films at minimum and TV shows over the years. They include The Kaminsky Method, the movie Swingers, Ocean's Eleven, Ed Wood, Hitchcock, Mad Men, Ray Donovan, and most recently, in Quentin Tarantino's feature Once Upon a Time in Hollywood. And that's just to name a few. Musso &amp; Frank is recognized worldwide not only for its extraordinary cuisine, for its perfect martinis, stirred, not shaken. Did you bring some? Oh, come on. Notwithstanding protestations from 007, that's the best martini in town. We have a video to queue up and play. You want to play the video? Musso &amp; Frank is globally renowned for its attentive, personalized, yet never-intrusive service by legendary servers such as, with us today, Alex Gallardo, has been with the restaurant for 15 years and is the son-in-law of the late Sergio Goncalves, who has with the restaurant for 47 years. Sergio unfortunately passed away this year. We also have Leonardo Rueda, who has been with the restaurant for eight years and is the son of Ruben Rueda, also a famous bartender at the location for 51 and a half years, who we also lost this year. So we want to thank you for being with us today. Thank you. Through Musso's, you see, it's a family. Through Musso's, it's a beloved neighborhood institution. They're not simply resting on a century's worth of success. Owner Mark Echeverria and his lovely wife Tina are here. And Mark and the team at Musso's are an active part of the Hollywood community. And we are pleased to work with them and other stakeholders in my Heart of Hollywood initiative, which is focused on improving quality of life and experience on Hollywood Boulevard and the historic Walk of Fame. Upcoming centennial celebrations, community events. This Friday, September 27th, Musso &amp; Frank will receive a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Everyone, just be patient, because if you've been there for 100 years, you'll eventually get your star as well. Musso &amp; Frank is an architectural gem where patrons can settle into one of the restaurant's classic red leather booths, amble over to its famed mahogany bar, gaze around in awe at its classic walls and ceilings, peer into what was Hollywood's first public phone booth, and find themselves transported to another time and place where every meal is a work of art, every patron is a cherished guest, and every moment is an instantly priceless memory. I'm going to share a memory. When I moved here in 1980- When I moved here in 1982, I was dirt poor, but I wanted to go into Musso and Frank. So the very first Friday evening that I was in town, I went in, I had a seat at that famous bar, and ordered a hot tea. That's all I could afford. And sitting at the bar, at the counter, it's at the counter, at the counter next to me was the cast of the show Fridays. Do you all remember Fridays? It filmed here for two years, but Larry David was one of the cast members. The entire cast was there. I'd been watching it. I thought I had died and gone to heaven. And the hot tea was delicious. And then, back in 2012, when I filed to run for the seat, my partner George Brockman and I decided to celebrate by going to Musso and Frank Grill and having a bottle of champagne. Thank you for that memory. Thank you for those memories. Therefore, colleagues, please join me as we commemorate September 27th as Musso and Frank Day in the city of Los Angeles. And I'm gonna present Mark Echeverria with a resolution, and we're gonna hear from Mark. Mark Echeverria.
Wow, thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Very, very warm words. Unbelievable. We stand before you as a family, proud yet humbled to accept this proclamation. Thank you all so very, very much. The restaurant opened 100 years ago, when Hollywood Boulevard was a dirt road. The building we stand in today was not here. That's how far back this restaurant goes. We take that serious. What we do at Musso's, and what has gotten us to be 100 years old, is by adhering to the traditions that the generations before us taught us. My great-grandfather bought the restaurant in 1927. He had very seasoned principles, morals, that he passed to my grandmother, the second generation, who then she passed to the third-generation owners who are with us, who have now instilled those morals in us, in the fourth generation. I stand next to Leo and Alex, who have learned from their father and father-in-law of how to proudly serve the community. We carry those traditions on with honor and pride. And even though we are marking 100 years today, we're actually just getting started. And we're gonna continue through this next century, carrying those morals forward and doing our part to preserve the history of Los Angeles. We have proudly served members of every one of your districts, proudly, and we will continue to do that. So with that, I thank you all for honoring us with this proclamation. Thank you, Councilman, very, very much for this honor, and we are humbled, and thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell, I'd like to recognize Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's really remarkable that we get to recognize Musso and Frank's today on the 100th anniversary. Unfortunately, the city of Los Angeles has, over the years, torn down most of its heritage of this kind, places like the Brown Derby and Chasens and many others. But this is remarkable, that places where people like Orson Welles and Charlie Chaplin and others used to dine. I do want to share one story of the late Sergio, and a prank he pulled on me and a couple of my staff a few years ago. We ate there, and I asked about the writer's room, which was famous for people like Ernest Hemingway and F. Scott Fitzgerald and others, I think in the '30s, that used to come there and write and dine and enjoy each other's company. And it had been closed and dormant for years and years. So I asked, is there any way to see the property? And he said yes, and took us through a back way and said, there's a back route that we can get you into. And we sneak into this property, we open the doors, and there's 500 people, because it had been restored and converted to this giant bar that was absolutely packed with people that had never heard any of the history, it's just a very successful bar. But it was, I thought it was a pretty good prank, and just one more way to remember him and the history of Musso and Frank's, which used to be, those two places used to be connected, I think, in the '30s and '40s, before Musso moved a few feet away. So this is a great place. Last time I ate there, which was a little while ago, they had some great sandabs. I don't know if it's still on the menu, but it was my favorite item on that menu, and I hope that that's there and Musso and Frank's there for at least another 100 years.
When you plan to eat at Musso and Frank, make a reservation. All right, somebody wants to say a few words, an enormous booster of all things Los Angeles, our very own Tom Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mitch. Thank you. Give it up for Mitchell Farrell. I just wanted to say, right here, these two people are so special, and their fathers, their father-in-law were so special. And when Edward James Olmos spoke, I thought about you, because your dad walked from Mexico all the way through to California and got a job at 15 at Musso Frank's, and worked his way up where everybody loved Ruben. God bless your dad. And your dad, who was dad-in-law, was so good to me, and he called everybody Papa. And Keith Richards would come into Los Angeles, and there's only one place he'd want to go, Musso Frank, and go to Sergio's table. It was very special. And lastly, two people I know who've been here and been there, is we honor Jerry Maron, the late, great man, head of the union for the Lollipop Guild, from the Wizard of Oz. We honored him here at this microphone, and we also honored him at your place that day. Thank you for allowing me the minute. God bless Musso Frank and the family, and God bless Mark and Tina for the great job.
Give him a round of applause.
Musso and Frank, 100 years strong. Congratulations. Thank you, and may God bless.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members. It's a banner day today here in Los Angeles. I'm actually really hungry and excited about lunch today, because of all the great talk of great food. Today, I'm proud to be joined by the founder, the CEO, the president, and the boss of the world-famous La Louisiane, the one and only Mr. Edison Wheeler. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Give him a big round of applause.
This is the 30th anniversary of the La Louisiane Restaurant. La Louisiane Restaurant is very important to this city. We like to proclaim that Los Angeles has more Mexicans than any city other than Mexico City. We have more Salvadorans than any city besides San Salvador, more Koreans than any city besides Seoul. Well, we also have more Louisianans than any city besides New Orleans, and La Louisiane is a capital and a hallmark for that community here in the city of Los Angeles. Mr. Wheeler has a great story, born in Louisiana, like so many Angelenos, joined the military. On his way back home, he stopped in Los Angeles with family, and he saw how nice it was and how beautiful the people were and how great the scenery was, and he decided that he wanted to buy a business and set up a life here in the city of Los Angeles. And so he went to Cal State Long Beach, got a degree in engineering, joined Rockwell International, and was an integral part of one of the first manned space shuttles projects called Project Apollo. This earned him an unprecedented honor that would be recognized the world over. He's the first black man to appear on the front page, top of the fold of the New Orleans Pikiun Restaurant, newspaper, excuse me, the main newspaper for New Orleans. That deserves a big round of applause for his work in engineering. After his, after building a career in the aerospace engineer, aerospace industry, he decided to set his roots down and do business. And so, right there at the corner of Slauson and Overhill, right at the border of Council District Eight and Council District 11, he bought The Witch Stand. It has that iconic Art Deco tower that sits high above the city. You can see it from all over the city. From there, he went and bought the building across the street called Twenty Grand, and that became 30 years ago.
You're too young to remember it.
I am too young to remember Twenty Grand. But it says it was there, so I'm taking their word for it. So we bought that. That became La Louisiane, which I do remember, several generations of my family going to La Louisiane to get good Creole food, hear good music, and most of all, have good fellowship and good community here in the city of Los Angeles. Whenever we'd have family come visit us in Los Angeles from Louisiana, after people were tired of cooking and smelling up the kitchens, they would say, take us over to La Louisiane, because that was the only place you could get good Creole food here in the city of Los Angeles. It's played hose to lots of officials, including several mayors of the city of New Orleans. And so today, join me in giving a big round of applause and a big celebration, 30 years for one of our iconic restaurants here in the city of Los Angeles, a cultural institution indeed, La Louisiane Restaurant and its leader, Mr. Edison Wheeler.
Let's give him a big round of applause. And wait, 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 before you speak. I want to recognize Mr. Price, and then I'll say something.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Harris Dawson, thanks for bringing in this iconic institution in our community. And I am, Mr. President, I am old enough to remember, but...
Yeah, I probably saw you there.
But the, I think the significant thing is, in addition to being a place to get good food and to be entertained, it was a real meeting place, you know, the ex officio office of many elected officials. I had several meetings, have had several meetings there over the years. But it's an institution that welcomes the community, that is a part of the community. Certainly, you've been a real pioneer, giving back in a number of ways. And so we just appreciate celebrating you, celebrating the institution, celebrating the La Louisiane family for many, many continued years of service to our community of entertainment and awfully good food. Congratulations.
Just let me say this as well. The, this man is a good man, hardworking, and one that we should all be proud of. An example, not just for African-Americans, but anybody with a dream, anybody that believes that if they work hard and do things the right way, that they could make it. I am just so proud that I can call you a friend. You know, there were events that I've had, and he would always be there. I was joking with him, Mr. Harris Dawson, earlier, that we did some golf tournaments and things of this nature, and he would always be the cleanest golfer. Now, I cannot speak to his game, but he al, he always got the attention. The food was excellent, and I've spent a lot of time there. I've had events there. The potato, I could eat some of the potato salad right now, with the fried chicken and the red beans and rice. But it's just so cool for me to be here, look in your eyes, sitting in this chair, as you're being recognized by a friend and brother of mine. This is what life is all about. You deserve it. You're a class act. Let's give him one heck of a round of applause. Welcome, my dear friend. Ed Wheeler, the mic is yours.
Okay, on behalf, on the behalf of my staff, definitely wouldn't have made me do it without my staff. We're talking about most of them going back from 15 to 20 years. So 20 years, rest of them, you know, but more than 10 years. And that's a big contribution to the success in any business. Now, La Louisiane, at first, I owned The Witch Stand right across the street from La Louisiane. And it was called Paul Richards at one time, and then Twenty Grand at one time. And I was looking at the building and seeing wasn't, definitely wasn't serving its maximum use and maximum purpose. And I was thinking about if I had, what I could do with it, you know. And sure enough, issues with my landlord across the street, and the building became a lease, and right across the street, I just moved over from The Witch Stand over to La Louisiane. And it was a little uphill battle, because it was an overnight success, you know, and we lived in a residential neighborhood, and College Park and all, and you know every which way. So then, we, it was tribute to dancing, so we cut the dancing out and just went strictly towards enhancing the business itself. Because, you know, like the neighborhood we was in, Windsor Hills, you know, it's, right now, it was called Black Beverly Hills. At that time, now there's signs saying Black Beverly Hills. And, you know, the people that live in the area, you know, they're not gonna lower their standards, your business just because you're black. You gotta, entrepreneur has something incumbent on him also. Make it as nice or better than where they're now going for dinner, like Beverly Hills or Marina. And that was my plan, and sure enough, we talked about 35 years ago, and little by little, you know, the place has really grown, and not just local people, but people, not just people from other states, we're talking about people from all over the world, you know, I guess Asia, Europe, they go to, when they come to Los Angeles, they won't know where to go, so they go to a tourist guide. And sure enough, we found out, Rana, that the tourist guide named four places in Los Angeles. Three was in Beverly Hills, four was La Louisiane. You know, and that's saying a lot, and not just that, today, we get most of our business from out-of-town guests. And they come, out-of-town people come, you know, in droves, three, five, or six, seven, whatever, you know. But, and they come to me, and tell me how they enjoyed it, you know, and they will be coming back. And...
So, Mr. Wheeler, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, its president, and all of the members, and the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, we want to congratulate La Louisiana for 30 years as an institution in the city of Los Angeles.
Give him one more round of applause. Let's bring down Mr. Murphy, Sergeant. Give him two minutes, no, one minute on item one, then his general public comment. Go ahead. Go ahead.
What's the items?
Yeah, item, item one. Yeah, item one.
Item one, I support. General public comment.
Let's give him his general public comment. Yes, sir.
That meeting yesterday, I walked out. I couldn't take it anymore. You need to control the means a little better. Oh, one lady threatened me if I made a, because the presentation was taking too long. Let me tell her, this is my house. If I want to make a goat noise or anything, if the presentation goes over an hour, that's it, bitch.
All right. Do we have Mr. Quam Robb? You here, Robb? Item one and thirty.
I have to agree with the last comments. And in relation to Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, I think it's kind of ridiculous that we have people coming to this council. And unlike the Board of County Supervisors, where presentations and proclamations are listed, we have no indication of that here. Took an hour and a half for people to wait for actual business to happen. Those presentations and proclamations, I don't think they're coming out of your pockets. That's not your time, that's city time.
Is this your public comment?
I'm talking about Department of Neighborhood Empowerment and how we're undermining that. I think it's a basic, yeah, I hope, whatever the council leadership is going forward, that we actually have real agendas that reflect actual business that's going to be happening here.
Okay, Robb, you got to speak on items one and thirty. The other item was continued, so you have items one and thirty.
I'll go to my general public comment.
Okay, give him his one minute.
I'll talk about behested payments. And there was something that was really weird earlier this year where council members were talking about how essential their fundraising was to the community. And staffers complaining about how much time they spend on behested payments and eight oh threes. I noticed only five out of our ten council members actually fill out their eight oh threes. I was happy to see last month we've gotten up to ten, more than double. That might be all the progress that we get. But I think it's going to be really hard for you to stand behind the idea that corporations are people. I think it's going to be really hard for us to move forward knowing that twenty percent of the money in our elections is dark and unaccountable. And our council is seemingly not doing enough to actually address that problem in time for our upcoming elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Robb. Cory, you have items one, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, all the way through thirty-one.
Oh, hey, how's it going, guys? Ooh, you're talking about corporations are people, but I believe we got a Burger King. I think he might be a person. Just saying. Oh, man, okay, so, I like what you guys are doing. I like it, baby. I like what you guys are doing with the Green New Deal stuff going on in the...
Got to get up.
Item twenty-seven, twenty-eight, I believe it was. I like that, but enough with the good stuff, let's talk about the bad stuff. I want to talk about another tactic of these Luciferian fuckbags. Talking about number one in terms of vacating Butt Street. I want to talk about a tactic with this 5G to vacate your butt forcibly. By this 5G technology, it's possible to make your stomach upset, make you poop uncontrollably. Just saying, it's true, it's part of the control, part of the control they're trying to do. So, let's go ahead, and I wanted to speak on number three in regards to cleaning up the neighborhood councils.
Cory, I told you your items, you have one, and then twenty-seven through thirty-one.
Okay, well, this guy needs to be taken care of. He does. He's got a lot of control issues. He coming in here with all these people that are...
So, Mr. Smith, it's one or twenty-seven to thirty-one?
You want to just go to your general public comment, Cory, so you can say whatever you want to say?
You said one and three.
No, I said one, I said one, then we went from twenty-seven to thirty-one.
Okay, I see, I see, all right. Well, let's move on to my general public comment then. I want to clarify what I said yesterday in regards to something about a hurricane in Venice. Just saying, under authorization of Civil Code 3495, I'm going to go ahead and let a hurricane destroy all these nuisance properties coming in here with their predatory tactics, enticing people to leave and give up their homes. I told you, it's another tactic to come in, kick us out, and take over. So, let's talk about this guy that needs to be cleaned up, Neighborhood Council. He's got some guy that got voted in, and that guy wasn't even at the meeting. What was that about? This entire committee that I'm on with him, he pretty much has everybody on that committee as all his agents. We need some help, man. It's all fucked up. So, I want to say something about Mr. Trump, saying that everybody's saying fuck Trump. But I just want to say that everybody is saying that and going against because he's the only one standing up to these fuckbags.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Mr. Previn, Eric Previn. Mr. Previn, you have item one, then you have twenty-eight through thirty-one in your general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I'm just looking for, well, forget about that. I just wanted to say how disappointed I am in the Motorola Soul Source item before I get on the agenda, which is twenty-eight and twenty-nine, you've got business improvement districts. Now, the justification across the city, and this is Little Tokyo, seventeen years, Los Feliz, nineteen-year-old operation, is that what you have is work being done that is separate from the day-to-day, you know, responsibilities of the city. I would say LOL to that. You know, because it's the same thing, it's just that the money goes into these corridors, and then everything around the bids goes to pot, unfortunately. I don't mean marijuana, sir, I don't want to get you excited. I'm talking about there's crap all over the place and nobody takes care of it. So, I see how it works for these merchant districts, but I really question whether or not this kind of privatization of the public system is really working. Because it's not, I don't think it is. I really have to, I have to question that. I want to give some support to the comments about the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. This is what we call controlled opposition. Controlled opposition is where you kind of allow people to speak where, in their narrow, narrow window. Like, for example, today, sir, you celebrated and settled two CPRA matters before this council, and yet you never took a public comment in front of this council. You took it up in Krikorian's haunted house, but that's it.
I think we moved off topic, Mr. Previn, did you get back on?
Well, we never heard the terms, and we're going to look closely at them.
So, now you're definitely off topic.
Well, okay, I'll get back on topic, sir, I don't want to disturb you. Obviously, the thirty-eight million dollars at item twenty-four just needs to be teased out because you've just got, Avak has put all of these coded numbers that require two secretaries and a clerk to figure out what actually happened. That's not transparent. Now, I know he has the option to do it even more complicated. He could do intentional errors, as he's been doing, and I'm going to be publishing a half dozen of them where there's an impact. I'll get there in a second, thank you. Now, Beltron has done a fantastic job, she's been in office for one day. She's continued David Ruse Dunn reforms for a month. So, welcome to what controlled opposition does. There we go. And, you know, I want to emphasize one more time, sir, because I think you remember that when we were back, actually, sir, do you represent the community where Lamarck Park is? Because someone recently reminded that they made a promise, which was no closing and no fencing of that park.
Mr. Previn, we're going to go to your, let's go to his general public comment.
It is the Crenshaw, okay. Well, thank you for letting down your people once again. Sure, let's do the general public comment, I agree, sir. Enough is enough, we can get to the billboard celebration and Krikorian taking money from Lamar later. But now, let's talk about you taking money from Juul Labs. Sir, once again, the whole city peeked around the corner and said, "What the hell is going on?" County Board of Supervisors banned flavored vaping in the unincorporated areas of the county. You took fifteen hundred dollars from Juul Vapor. I've asked you, I believe others in the media are looking, for your comment. Are you going to return that money? Or are you going to simply double down and, you know, support ongoing vaping? That's a decision that you should be public about, sir, because you're the council president. This could be your last term. We saw LeBonde here, I know he's down here for the record disposition schedule, that David Ruo for Public Works and also for planning and other groups. They're going to try to, you know, be very clear that people can't destroy records. Now, at Metro Board, where Krikorian will be tomorrow, I want to invite everybody down there at nine AM or nine-thirty AM, check it. They're going to be, that's an operation where they destroy...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let's get Mr. Sax, Arnold Sax, you have item one and item thirty-one. So he'll get two minutes for that. Well, I don't see that, but we'll add that.
Thank you, I'll sign up. Thank you, good morning. So, item number one is a vacation of land. So is this clearance part of the Crenshaw Development Ordinance that was enacted by, I guess, the Coliseum Commission? And maybe not heard by the general public? But they're going to do a lot of developing around the Coliseum, and it's going to affect a lot of the general population. And I'm not sure if people really are aware of it. But an ordinance is an ordinance, and so it goes. Item twenty-nine is really confusing. It's a Community Build Incorporated, serving as the Owners Association to administer for the Greater Lamarck Park Village and, oh, excuse me, I put the word "and" in. But it's the Greater Lamarck Park Village and the Crenshaw Corridor Business Improvement District. So, how does a Owners Association get to hire Community Build Incorporated to administer what? Will they be including fast food restaurants? Will they be including any of the things that were denied? You know, Jan Perry passed a motion in the City Council that was approved that eliminated fast food restaurants. A good job killer for the Lamarck Park and Crenshaw Corridor Business District. People are complaining about they have no say in the Crenshaw Corridor District. And maybe now they'll find out why, because the Owners Association has got this Community Build Incorporated to serve as what, their liaison? Who knows? Who knows who's in the Owners Association? It's really confusing. You should come to more meetings and find out, read the agendas, it's really important. Item number thirty-one refers to payroll obligations. They're transferring money from general salaries to overtime general for the DOT, L.A. DOT, be very specific, to meet payroll obligations for overtime. So the new budget that you all approved began July first. We're not three months along, and you've already used up all the overtime in the L.A. DOT. That doesn't sound good for the rest of the nine months of the year in the city. Who's doing the budgeting here? How do you get these things done? It'd be really interesting if you had more time for the public to answer questions regarding budgets and maybe a little less time on presentations. An hour and a half yesterday? Holy cow. Who could sit here for an hour and a half? I mean, I get it. We run, wash, rinse, repeat stuff. But please, grow up. It's really difficult to be on this side of the microphone and acknowledge how hard you're working lifting to do nothing.
Let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
My general public comment, so I got here really fortunate, and I got here when I was reading the opening credits, and it mentioned the City Council is a public forum. So your rules refer to meetings and meetings, committee meetings and council meetings. But it makes no reference to public forums. So, Mr. City Attorney, does that include public forums? Thank you for your answer. And by the way, did anybody read the newspaper? There was a real kerfuffle in Southern California about some racial slurs. Mr. City Attorney, what qualifies as a racial slur? And then in today's presentation, it was really good, marginalized populations. When do you take the word marginalized out of populations? And what becomes of a marginalized? You know what a marginalized is? That's a loophole. And you know what loopholes are? Those are motions that aren't read into the minutes.
Thank you. Let's go to, is there Andrea Grossman? Please come forward. One minute.
I have two items. I have general public comment in item ten and eleven.
Item ten and eleven were already voted on. The hearing was held in the committee.
Oh, okay.
So you can, let's start her one minute all over again, okay?
Okay. My name is Andrea Leon Grossman, and I'm here to urge the City Council to adopt a new rule to have no gas on new buildings. Berkeley, San Luis Obispo, San Jose, and Menlo Park already adopted that. And now Santa Rosa and San Francisco are about to vote on that. This is Climate Strike Week, and I really urge you to look at what we're doing with our city. We really need to stop using dirty fossil fuels, and gas is one of them. This is a city that has committed to go a hundred percent renewable energy soon, and we really need to stop walking that walk. I want to quote Greta Thunberg on what she said. "You say that you hear us and that you understand the urgency, but no matter how sad and angry I am, I do not want to believe that because if you really do understand the situation, and I still kept on failing to act, then you will be evil, and that I refuse to believe." Thank you.
If we could get Steve Kuji. You have item one and general public comment. Steve? Eloise Galindo? Esperanza Martinez? Yes, please identify.
So I just wanted to see if because I...
We have translation.
If she could be given two minutes.
Please, our translator, please.
I would like to know if I can have two additional minutes because I will require translation.
Tell her that the way that this works is that when you're doing the translation, we won't run the clock. We'll only run it when she speaks, so it's as fair as we can do it. So go ahead, give her one minute.
Hola, mi nombre es Eloisa Galindo.
Hi, good morning, my name is Eloisa Galindo.
Con mucho respeto a ustedes, les digo que ustedes y los que están aquí presentes somos las mismas, valemos lo mismo.
With a lot of respect to you and all of those that are here, I want you to know that those that are here, we are of the same value as all of you.
Quiero que me pongan mucha atención, soy una madre de escuelas públicas.
I want you to pay a lot of attention to me, I'm a mother of children in public schools.
Hoy estoy aquí para decirles a ustedes que deben hacer un estudio profundo a nivel económico, social, emocional de los estudiantes y padres y la comunidad.
And I'm here to tell you that you should now take up a study, an in-depth study, about the health, emotional health, and financial ability of the students of the children at the school.
Deben dejar de poner escuelas charter, por ejemplo, la que se va a construir en Watts.
For example, you should put a stop to building the charter school that's about to be built in Watts.
Yo soy una madre que está sufriendo las consecuencias de que en el este de Los Ángeles estén construidas en cada esquina una pública y una charter.
I'm a mother who is suffering those consequences when there is a school that is a public school and a charter school built right next to it in the area of East Los Angeles.
Mi hija perdió los recursos y el dinero, por lo tanto, está en una, en un salón combo sexto y quinto grado.
My daughter lost the resources to her school, and therefore, she is now in a combined grade, fifth and sixth grade at her school.
El maestro no puede enseñarle igual que siendo un solo maestro.
The teacher cannot teach the same way when he's only one single teacher.
Solo les pido que investiguen a las corporaciones.
Thank you.
I just asked that you study the corporations.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Do not open a school in Watts.
Okay, Mr. Herman, items one. So you have items one, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, so go ahead.
President Wilson, you also called Esperanza.
President Wesson, you also called Esperanza Martinez. I didn't get my time.
Is that...
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. I apologize.
No problem.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Esperanza Martinez, and I'm a parent community organizer with United Teachers Los Angeles. This morning, we're here to ask Councilmember Buzcaino to intervene on behalf of educators, families, and staff at Joyner Elementary School and halt the construction of KIP Philosophers Academy on Grape Street until a more in-depth traffic report is conducted. I believe wholeheartedly, Councilmember Buzcaino, that despite arguments of jurisdiction and temporary agreements of charter colocations, and where we all may stand on the charter debate, that you care about the safety of your constituents, the students, families, and staff that attend the schools in your district. It is because of this belief that we come to you to ask you to do the right, safe, and just thing and direct staff to produce a more in-depth traffic impact analysis that factors in potential traffic and environmental concerns that factor in the co-located campus of KIP Ignite 102nd EEC.
Thank you.
And the projected...
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Herman.
My number since I was interrupted? Are you going to still discriminate against me?
You have item one.
Why are you running my time?
Twenty-seven through thirty-one.
Why are you running my fucking time? You see? There's no reason when our law punishes words like the "E-I-R" under "but", or is it spelled "B-U-T-T-E-street-asshole", to vacate in CD fourteen from that bald fucking criminal. And then in item four regarding more murals.
No, you gotta go from there, Mr. Herman.
What were the other items then?
You gotta go to twenty-seven. I told you.
Twenty-seven is very far, but I'll find it. Yeah, here it is. Twenty-seven, CD four and CD thirteen, O'Farrell the bitch. The city clerk has intended for Los Feliz Village that merchant-based businesses that you put in the fucking sidewalks violate my disability rights because you fuck up my sidewalk and streets. People cannot pay the assessments, and you're discriminating because when I want to sell my drugs on a public sidewalk to assess the business boundaries, why do I have to follow such an assessment imposed to exceed a reasonable cost? I'm fucking poor. Really? That's why you put two TROs against me? Because the assessment for the proposed business bid, B-I-D stands for big incident dick, are not taxes? And that bid qualifies me for those exemptions under SSI? Fuck, fuck you, day-to-day operations of the city. You see, I know how to navigate this fucking agenda despite my disability. And I'm reading into the record this issue. Services to be provided? Fuck your owner associations. Nature of professional expert? I'm an expert. Special services is what I render under the American Disability Act. Services are of a temporary, occasional character? Fuck your character, Mr. Garcetti, that the use of competitive bidding would be impractical and unreasonable. And you should not take advantages of people with disabilities, motherfucker, for the undesirable wear common law, otherwise known excuses? Fuck you, Ms. Hyowitz, with competitive bidding requirements for the nineteenth operating year, January 2020, December 31st? Fuck all you. Then on the other item, like twenty-nine, fuck that for the record. Item twenty-eight, Jose Weeza, fuck you for the record, little Tokyo. And as far as I'm concerned, fuck item thirty and fuck thirty-one, too.
Give him his one minute.
Now, for the record, I brought these documentations when I planned to bring a lawsuit against the City of Los Angeles for reasonable accommodations. I want large print. You can provide me one large print because other cities provide me large print. And you're being biased, prejudiced, and discriminatory when you don't provide me with the fucking information I need to read. So never in the history has I ever believed a fucking person like you do anything right, City of Los Angeles, to follow Eric Garcetti's command, Watts versus you, in this issue. If they ever make me carry a rifle, if, the first man I want to get in my sight may be you. And that's not a threat. That's the utterance when the law punishes words. First Amendment, fuck you. Reasonable accommodations, ADA, discrimination? Yes, public issues should be uninhibited. Debate on sharp...
Thank you. Your time's expired. All right.
And Mr. Herman, going forward, let me remind you, please don't shout into our mic like that.
Ilsa Escobar on this is general public comment. Abram Farley Jr. Is there, I think, Shalon Jordan? Daniel Garcia, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ilsa Escobar. I am a parent community organizer with United Teachers Los Angeles. A lot of my work has led me to be mostly in East L.A. and Boyle Heights. Last year, just so you all know, we were here basically fighting the construction of a KIP charter school in Boyle Heights. We were able to stop that with a lot of organizing, making sure that the community was involved in the process, for basically saying the charter school was not needed. And next, but KIP has a lot of resources. It's a national organization backed by wealthy billionaires. And so now they're trying to open up a school in Watts. We try to submit an appeal to say that not enough community was involved in this process. And we're here to remind you of that. The quality of life is about to go down in Watts. Drive around anywhere where there is a charter school, there's exacerbated traffic congestion.
Thank you. Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Dayshalon Jordan. I'm the proud principal of Florence Griffith Joyner Elementary. And I'm here on the behalf of my staff and parents who are not able to attend because of distance and the newness of this process. Here to speak about the construction that is being built. KIP Philosophers is being built across the street from our school directly and the impact that it's going to have on our school community. So our concern that there hasn't been an environmental analysis that is going to directly focus on the safety and traffic concerns because we currently have 900 students already on our campus, and it's unsafe situations happening now. And we are asking you all to respectfully come out and look at the concerns in the morning time where there's much traffic congestion, where there's safety issues happening currently to help us mitigate these problems as well as doing a full environment analysis.
Principal, wait one second. I kind of moved some things around accidentally on my speaking cue here. Do you have any other folk that are with you today to speak on this item?
Not today because of the time.
No, I'm just fine. I just didn't want to, because I kind of called people out of order. So thank you. And I think Mr. Farley, is that you? And you're next.
My name is Abram Farley Jr. from Africa Town Coalition. Through the eighth district, to the tenth district. This is about, I'm talking about this metro line, LAX-Crenshaw train that's about to open up next year that we, in our community, send these developers come in and gentrificate our community through the opportunity zone that they have to come and take some of these businesses and turn them to a commercial, no, I mean, non-commercial businesses. And one of the businesses that they're trying to take from our community is Africa Town. It's in Africa Town. It's called a FIBA Center. The FIBA Center, been there for 25 years. And what they do, they try to put a big Crenshaw thing, a tower, and a pocket park. So we need to save our leadership at the FIBA Center. So that's all I'm saying.
Okay, Mr. Spindler. Items twenty-seven through thirty-one. Mr. Spindler? And if I could get Jabari, if you'd come up, you'll be after him.
Thank you, fool, for running my time so early. That's right. Disrespecting the community. That's the Wesson way.
Now, you're going to speak on the agenda.
All right, just keep that little tiny nigger mouth quiet there, fool. Number twenty-nine. Lamart Park. Mr. President, take down that fucking fence on Lamart Park. It's about time. Now, you stuck that fence up there, and you are representing something about that community that I don't like. You making it look like it's a crime scene. It's a park, motherfucker, so open it up to the public. Yeah. Well said. Yeah. Turn that fucking page, goddammit. All right. Now we get this fucking cunt on number thirty. Requiem bitch train for the Department of Neighborhood Nonsense known as empowerment? You don't empower shit, motherfucker. Now we getting $192,000 of absolute nonsense fucking shit. Now why are we paying somebody as much money as the great Herman J. S. and Wesson get paid? What is this fucking cunt going to do for me? What's she going to do for the FIBA Center? What's she going to do about homelessness? Not a goddamn fucking thing. That's what we paying for. And that's why this staff member up here walking in front of me disrespecting me,
Stay on topic, Mr. Spindler. Now, give him his one minute. Give him his one minute for general public comment.
Shut your tiny little nigger mouth, foe, and put a cigarette in it.
Boy, you sure are brave on the other side of that thing, Mr. Spindler.
The public the right to speak, foe. I'm on the topic. The selection of my motherfucking content is mine. It's under the First Amendment. That came from slave owners. That's right. Slave owners made the First Amendment. That's right. And you know it, motherfucker. And you know that it applies all the way to 1865. It took a colored man to be able to express the First Amendment. Then you did it with Jim Crow. So don't talk about your fucking rights. When you, motherfucker over there, and you support the, defend the Constitution, just remember, you run an L.A. like a slave colony. So go outside and have your cigarette, you dumb motherfucker. First Amendment, fuck you.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to, was it Jabari? Is he here? Do we have a Darryl Gale, Jill, Dr. Jill Humphries? I think I did call a Daniel Garcia earlier. Please come up. Did anyone else sign up for public comment? Your name hasn't been called yet. I'll do my best to answer you. Yes?
Hi, I'm Darryl Gale. I'm a downtown resident. And I wanted to talk about plastic and plastic pollution. When I first encountered a new resident at the downtown YMCA, I noticed that they were not doing anything but serving on styrofoam, more styrofoam. And they seemed like they were filling up a complete dumpster, like twice a day, just of styrofoam and plastic. And then just walking around downtown on a Saturday, I saw a nonprofit that was feeding the homeless, but they were feeding the homeless with styrofoam cups and plastic sandwiches, which I'm sure just got thrown into our landfill or ended up in our water system. So I really am looking at City Council for some good guidance on how to deal with all the plastic, the excess plastic pollution. I remember telling the restaurateur that Pasadena and Culver City were using cardboard and compostable plastic. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Garcia, come on forward. And Lynn Moses, Tanya Edwards, Roger Helmer.
I'm... I'm... I'm busy, because I have another... Another... Item agenda. Give me two more minutes. I have... I have... I have two more minutes to my agenda item.
Okay, then I'll make sure that you get them. Just keep talking, and I'll find those items.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'm here because I want to speak to my councilmember, Lee, and to the people in Chafford because they have huge opposition on Chafford about a house in the...
Give him another minute because we did find another item. Go ahead. You have two. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is housing apartment for homeless people in my area, and they are protesting it. I'm here to educate people that this is a wrong area to possess. And we should be more concerned about the issue of homeless. Making affordable and accessible housing. The question is here, the question is here, the question is... Is family... Is he not there, then where? Is he not here, then there's a question about building. The question about building should be now. And we need affordable and accessible housing now.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. So, next speaker. Also, I want to call up Marco Juarez. And if I called your name earlier, please come up. I want to try to get to everybody. Yes, ma'am. Please identify yourself.
My name is Tanya Edwards. And I see Marquesa's not here. I wish he was. But since he's not here, I'll just address you, Mr. Wesson. My issue is about how you guys are recognizing empowerment and development in the black community. I sat here today, and I watched every culture, Asian and Hispanic, get so much recognition. But we as black people have become silenced, and nobody's listening to us about our FIBA Center, which is one of the places where we do have advancements and things like that for the black community to learn and to do better. And when you say that everybody else's culture is important, well, the black culture is also important. And I appreciate James Edwards, almost, because I say almost black, embracing us with his community because that's important. Nobody is doing anything for the black people, and it's falling on deaf ears. And you guys act like we don't exist.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
When I left the house this morning, my wife said, "Honey, no yelling."
It's time all over. Identify yourself first for the record.
Thank you. Lynn Moses. When I left the house this morning, my wife said, "Honey, no yelling today." I'm going to do my best. We live in a representative form of government. Mr. Sadio said earlier, talked about the value of having representation. The black community, one of our largest problems, we have no representation. Ridley Thomas, Wesson, and certainly Mr. Dawson.
Ridley Thomas, Wesson, and certainly Mr. Dawson, does not represent the black community. They represent developers, okay, in all these big developments that the, the community cannot afford. I'm here for the Afibah Center as well. He wants to evict the Afibah Center for his Destination Crenshaw gentrification project. We will not allow it, Dawson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moses. Next speaker, next speaker, please. And again, we're looking for, did Dr. Humphries, Jill Humphries, Darlington, Jabari, Roger, yes, sir.
Buenos dias. Desde el 2001 estoy tratando de encontrar ayuda. Pensaba que solo en México existía corrupción. He pagado el precio de reportar aquí en Los Ángeles a agencias del gobierno. Son peores. A la agencia que me refiero es L A H C I D.
The translator has to translate for you unless you can speak English.
Uh, español. Uh, puedo terminar de leerlo todo y dárselo para que lo traduzca?
Is it all right if I finish reading the whole thing and then I'll give it to you for you to translate?
Lo, lo continúan? No sé, desde el principio, o cómo se ha movido?
From the beginning, do I start over?
No, no, come on now, Marco, what are you going to do?
A la agencia que me refiero es L A H C I D y sus inspectores junto a sus investigadores no ayudan a las personas deshabilitadas y de bajos recursos, como dijo el investigador Placencia, que tenemos que pagar más renta o que me moviera del edificio. La investigadora Evelyn Narango me amenazó que me callara o autorizaría otra eviction. La maña María Elena, María Elena Díaz no sabe lo más básico de las matemáticas, ya que para ella el 3% de $650 son $40. Ya basta de proteger compañías de mantenimiento criminales y de edificios.
Mr. Juarez, this is unfair to our translator, okay? I mean, come on, man. Plus, you speak English anyway. All right, so, well, I mean, so, no, 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 no. I mean, you really expect her to say all of that? I mean, however you want to do it, I'm going to let you do it, but be fair to her. She hadn't done anything to you. So, you've got 20 seconds left, she can translate it, or you can do it on your own.
Can you translate?
Good morning. As of 2001, I have been trying to look for help, thinking that there was Mexico, there was corruption in Mexico, and I have paid a price for that. I've also reported it here in Los Angeles, to the government in Los Angeles, which are actually worse. The agency had given me over at L A H C I D, and the inspectors with those investigators have not helped the people who have disabilities or of low income. Like I've told the different investigators at Placencia, that we need to have them pay more in rent, or they want me to move out of the building. The investigator Evelyn Narango also has threatened me, told me to be quiet, or she is going to evict me. That manager, Mariana Diaz, is also someone who's not giving me, does not know basic math skills, because she thinks 3% of $650 is $40. That's enough. I want to complain about the companies, and you are criminals, and also the building owners. No more bullying of people who have disabilities. If you are not going to be part of the solution, do not be part of the problem. And marijuana smoke does hurt us, even if you don't smoke it. Thank you.
Let him wrap it up now.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Dr. Humphries, Jill Humphries, Darlington, Jabari, Roger, Roger Hellman. Um, all right, so that concludes public comment. Let's vote on item one. Please open up the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
I believe next we'll go to items eight and nine. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Let's go to item 12. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Items 27 through 31, 27 through 31. Let's prepare to vote on those items. You ready? Open up the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Bonin on four. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Could staff come up for a question?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for coming to the table. Colleagues, this is the, the citywide sign regulations, an issue that has been debated endlessly around here, since before any of us were elected officials, this issue has been going on. As long as I have seen the issue back since the 90s, it has been one where everything the city has done, almost everything the city has done, has made the problem worse. And there have been a lot of unintended consequences. This one has sort of been a game of ping pong back and forth. I know that CPC approved something in 2013, there've been different versions back and forth, now we have something with, with tier one, tier two, and, and tier three. I, I, I want to get a little more info on this and, and proceed cautiously. I remember back in 2008 or 2009, there was a billboard issue up, and it went through on consent, and it was Bill Rosendahl's greatest regret, that he did not draw more attention to it because of the impacts the proliferation of billboards then had. My first question is, what problem are we trying to solve?
Hi, uh, is this on? Hello? Sure. Uh, good morning or afternoon. My name is Tom Rothman, Principal City Planner with the department. I'm joined with Phyllis Nathanson, she's been the project manager for the sign ordinance recently. So as you correctly stated, the planning department and the city council have been engaged in working on the sign regulations, off-site sign regulations, for over a decade now. We're trying to come up with regulations to allow off-site signs in the city of Los Angeles. Currently, they are banned, with a number of exceptions. What we're here today for is, we went to, we've been at Plum over 40 times, or about 40 times, with different informational reports. We went before Plum last month with a, with our most recent report, talking about ways to maybe talk about allowing different types of sign districts, which would be an exception to the ban.
So, again, I'm going back to what, what problem we're, we're trying to solve, is, is the problem we're trying to solve, that we don't have enough billboards?
I, I think the purpose of the sign regulations initially was to update the citywide sign regulations, and then the issue of billboards, and now digital billboards has come up, and this is a way to regulate, allow to, to a degree, but to a limited degree.
So, I mean, there's differences of opinions on billboards. My constituency and I feel very strongly do not like billboards, do not support their extension at all, do not like digital billboards, except in some discreet sign areas. LAX in my district is a discreet sign area, and glad to see it, it, it works there. Really afraid of it expanding elsewhere around the city under major corridors. And it sounds as if thi- this latest version, unlike the B-plus version that CPC considered back in, in, well, a few years ago now, will allow outside of sign districts.
Uh, yes, so, it would allow, we, we just received these instructions, so we're still evaluating them and, and understanding. But to our understanding, it appears that, according to our instructions, that digital signs would be allowed in an, an additional type of sign district, a tier three, and also along heavily trafficked corridors and commercial nodes.
And in, in the city's long history of complicated litigation that it loses, my, my recollection is that when we started looking at stuff outside of sign districts, where we started going from objective criteria to subjective criteria, we got in big trouble, and then we had to allow billboards everywhere. Why do we think that, that this new process, which has a good deal of subjectivity baked into it, about where you would indicate tier three is allowed, won't put us in the same legal jeopardy and, and allow billboards everywhere?
That's Tom Rothman again. Good point. I think we are trying to get a handle on our billboards and our off-site signs. Currently, you're correct, and although we have a ban, there are some exceptions. One of the big exceptions is we allow sign districts, so they can be allowed by application or by city consensus. We can have a sign district which has its own set of rules, currently in our code today, where a sign district can be located is very broad. They're allowed to be applied for in almost all of our commercial and manufacturing zones, which covers a very, very broad swath of our city. We're trying to get a better handle on that. Should we just limit these sign districts to our regional centers, which is, which is a proposal that has been out there, but it's officially, they are allowed today in all of our commercial zones. So we can have billboards everywhere today if we allowed applications to be processed and approved.
So, I, I get some of this. I mean, there's, for some, having more billboards is a, is a, is a much-needed revenue source for the city to help pay for services. For some, it's an opportunity to do a trade-off and have sign removal, and in some areas that are not big economic generators, it's actually an equity issue, because otherwise they don't have the opportunity to remove billboards. I get all that. I, I think that was largely dealt with in, in the B-plus version from CPC. So, colleagues, I, I won't belabor the point today, today's just giving the instructions for the ordinance. I'm, I'm going to vote no today, and I, I assume I will when it, when the ordinance comes back. I just wanted to highlight and raise these issues as it goes forward, and so that we can have a more detailed discussion when it comes back. But I, I thank you for the, the exchange, and I'll be a no vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank Mr. Bonin for his comments, and all the members of the Plum Committee, myself included, Mr. Weezer. We've sat through literally several days of hearings on billboards during just the time I've been on council, and this was going on 10 or 12 years before I, I arrived at the city council. And so, our, our hope with what we have before us today, is that we bring this conversation to a close, or at least take it to the next juncture, because it, it, I think claws at our credibility, compromises our credibility, to be in a debate that, you know, lasted almost a generation now, over digital billboards, which is a technology that I think came out about 25 or 30 years ago. So I think we resolve that. Also now, our, the policy we have now has won so many exceptions to it, and two, such confusing rules, that it really isn't an effective policy for anybody. And then third, I do think, and want to emphasize, this is an opportunity for us as a council to work with business to achieve what I think is a very, very important goal, and that is to deal with sign blight. Throughout the South LA, the Northeast San Fernando Valley, parts of East LA, I mean, it's just ridiculous the amounts of signs that were, that were allowed under the existing policy that we have, so we can close that loophole, and we can actually get some of the sign companies to work with us and get those signs taken away. And so, that's our hope, and that's what we want to have forward, but we encourage a vigorous debate and, and participation by everybody on the council, and it's a very, very important issue going forward for the city of LA.
Thank you. Next speaker on the queue, Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson, for shepherding this really difficult issue, complicated issue, through the Plum Committee. I agree with many of the points raised by Councilmember Bonin. I will say that for, for me, if we are to advance forward with the digital sign ordinance at all, it must achieve significant reduction in the amount of signage that we have in the city of Los Angeles, first of all. So a takedown provision is going to be essential to this. It's going to have to produce community benefits for the neighborhoods that do have digital billboards, and it's going to have to avoid adverse impacts to surrounding residential neighborhoods. So those are key issues that I'm going to be looking to. And on the issue of subjectivity, Mr. Bonin, for me, as I've been saying for many years, the way to avoid subjectivity and to have a bright line, objective measure of locations where signs could be permitted, would be to have a public-only option, so that there are no signs on, digital signs on privately-owned property, but signs would only be put on publicly-owned property. And the advantages of this include the fact that if it's on our property, we can control content, which we cannot do if it's on private property. The revenues that will be derived, sometimes the significant revenues that digital billboards will produce, would not go to private, into private pockets, but rather to benefit the taxpayers of Los Angeles, by providing a revenue source that will allow us to provide essential public services. So, if we are to go forward with this, and to me, it's still a big if, my position is going to be that I believe public-only is the way to go. So, what I would request, and, Mr. Harris-Dawson, if, if you would consider accepting as a, as a friendly amendment, on recommendation number seven, I, I would ask that DCP come back to us with both options, so that this council can consider that and discuss the policy benefits and, and pluses and minuses of going both directions. So I would ask that item seven, recommendation number seven, read, instruct the DCP, based on a citywide cap, to report to the council with proposals for, one, a phasing program whereby signs in public areas would be permitted before digital signs can be located on private property, and, two, a program limiting digital signs only to public areas.
Do we have a second? Mr., okay, thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
So, if that's considered friendly?
Friendly amendment, very good, accepted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Corretts, next speaker, followed by Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with Mr. Bonin, that at one point, we had a pretty good proposal. Now, there've been so many versions that I'm not even sure where we are. So, I, I guess I don't object sending it back to the Planning Commission, but I'd like to have more of a handle on it. Certainly, a couple of the things that I think are important to me, I'd like to have the council office and the council member have the ability to veto locations. I certainly know a number of them, which I testified against in, in Westwood, for instance, before I was elected, just as a private citizen. I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't want to lose the ability to nix the sites that, that I find the most distracting and dangerous in my district. I think also, there are areas where specific plans regulate billboards, most notably Century City, which for decades has not allowed a single billboard, and if somehow they were to go up, I think all of my constituents would think that I lost my mind for somehow allowing that to be changed after so many decades. So I wouldn't want it to be able to override existing specific plans and community plans. There's so many other pieces of this, I won't even try to address them. I know you'll send it back and hopefully come back with some options, hopefully at least one of which is acceptable to folks that are not in love with billboards, but are willing to accept a very few of them in their district in the least impactful locations. But I want to be sure we have that option, and that districts aren't forced upon council members that don't want them.
So, Mr. Corretts, is that an amending motion? No?
It, it's not a motion, it's just a, a general direction and thought.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I really want to thank the Plum Chair, Mr. Harris-Dawson, for finally bringing this to us. And literally, I think we're both freshman colleagues from four years ago, and this is one of those issues that kept on every six months. It was coming before us, coming before us, and now, four years later, it's finally kind of before us. So I really thank you for all of your work in pushing this through, and I also want to echo the frustration that Councilmember Bonin expressed. I mean, this needs to be done now, and I, but, but with that same frustration, I'm actually going to vote yes, because I, I want this to go to CPC, so it hurry-ups and comes back to us in a version we could vote. I just want to state for the record that I was okay, like Councilman Corretts with the B-plus version, and Councilman Bonin with the B-plus version, but I do see some of the concerns that were brought up by other members, like yourself, like the Chair, which are reasonable. But I do want to state that I remain committed to the following principles, that I generally oppose any in-lie fees and relocation programs that enable sign companies to pay their way into making more signs. I support the highest feasible, highest feasible ratio of takedowns, and also for the most aggressive and practical ordinance that will finally start to retire excess signs that is throughout our city. Now, I'm not going to make any amendments here. I am going to write, I plan to write a letter to the CPC or the DCP, expressing my, my concerns and some of my recommendations, because I know all we're voting on today is to send it back to CPC with other thoughts and recommendations. But I just hope it doesn't take another four years to come back here. But thank you, Councilman Harris-Dawson, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you. And for clarification, we're also sending it back to Plum, yes? Okay, great, I, so that, I have no objection to that either. In relation to the takedown provisions, are, are we no longer looking at version B-plus at all? Is that accurate to say? It's, it's been modified since then?
Well, we can look at anything, these are, I mean, B, B-plus, A, whatever you want to call it, we're just responding, we haven't drafted a new version since then, but, you know, everything is still on the table.
All right.
A B-plus version is simply to keep the sign districts allowed in our regional centers only, and a few other things.
And then within that, the takedown provision of
Yes.
Removing up to 10 non-permitted billboards, and then allowing one digital, is that somewhat accurate?
Well, we have been working off of a version from December 2017, and my assumption is from these, that these instructions amend that version, which the takedown for, in sign districts, tier one and tier two, was one-to-one and two-to-one, but for relocation agreements, was nine-to-one with in-lie payments, allowing a lower rate of sign reduction.
I know this particular issue has had very, very broad involvement with the neighborhood councils, with community groups, and so I just want to make sure that the sand hasn't shifted under all of their feet in reading some of the letters, and conditions and support, and community impact statements, et cetera, so that the neighborhood groups that have leaned in aren't also taken by surprise with all of this. Just, just I want to put that out there for the record. And then, of real importance to me is, not just the major arteries, but the secondary streets that are sometimes considered arteries as well, and we can all think of them in our districts. For, for example, for me, I've got Silver Lake Boulevard, Echo Park Avenue, Fletcher Drive, and many, many others, where if an electronic, a digital billboard shows up out of nowhere, it'll be met with widespread condemnation and, you know, really bad, really poorly received. So I'd want to make sure that we have real control when we're talking about exactly where, and the nature of the billboards that we might unwittingly be supporting within that takedown provision, as they relate specifically to digital. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other speakers on the queue. Item four is now before us, let's open the roll.
And excuse me, Mr. President, that is as amended by the motion, Krikorian, Harris-Dawson.
Item four is amended, it's before us. Thank you. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Well, no.
Okay, that's approved. Okay, I believe we need to reconsider item six for an amending motion that's been circulated. Let's reconsider item six, open the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, public, public comment has been satisfied in committee. Again, public comment on item four that we just took up, has already been satisfied in committee, thank you. So, item number six. Mr. City Attorney?
So, item four, the hearing was held in committee.
Okay, he's trying to explain, ma'am, hold on.
The hearing was held as committee, we do not need to reopen it here, it's going back to the committee, you'll have ample opportunity to talk about it again.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, you've just been advised, please, we do not disrupt this meeting, we have to continue our city business. So item number six needs to be reconsidered, members? Let's open the roll on item number six for reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nice.
Okay, so now, item six is before us, as amended. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen.
That's approved.
And, Mr. President?
I believe, Madam Kirk, we have some items to be taken forthwith?
Yes, there are requests for members to take item 27, 28, 29, 34, and 36 forthwith.
Without objection, that'll be the order. What's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Desk is cleared, thank you. Any announcements, members?
I have an announcement. I want to recognize my planning deputy, Axel Palacios, stand up, Axel. He's getting married on Saturday to his fiancee, Kim Ortega, who is a deputy with supervisor Solis's office. So, congratulations. Remember these two words, yes, dear, is a successful marriage, we love you. Axel and Kim, congratulations. Any other announcements, members? Okay, any adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions. An announcement, Mr. Bonin, for committee?
Yes, it's 12:40, I'm being asked to delay the 1:00 PM start time for T Committee, is 1:15, okay? Okay, T Committee will start at 1:15.
Transportation Committee will start at 1:15?
Yes.
1:15, thank you. Okay, no other adjourning motions, no adjourning motions? Okay, we are now adjourned, go forth and serve as people of the city of Los Angeles, thank you.